Evening, everybody. We call this meeting to order, please. I'm going to ask if we stand, and Councilwoman Andrews will have our pledge and our invocation.
Our kind and dear heavenly Father, we come before we ask for your blessing as we serve this city that we will be prompted and inspired to make good decisions that will have a positive impact on this community. We would ask you to please bless the citizens of this community who are suffering from loss or financial hardships or any other life event that they may be struggling with, that they will feel your peace and comfort as they go through those struggles. We would ask you to bless those who serve our community, who are working to vaccinate our community and keep them safe, or the employees who work hard on a daily basis, especially those who put their lives on the line for our community. We ask you to please bless our servicemen and women that serve this country, and we thank you for all our many blessings and say these things.
The United States of America, and to the blood for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. Recommended Constrained Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 and beyond. Tanya is here. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
I hope everybody's doing well. Tonight, we have the recommended CCIP. This did go in front of the Planning Commission with a vote of six to zero to bring it forth to City Council tonight. Come on. There we go. So tonight, we went a little close. I apologize. We jumped. There we go. Just as a reminder, one of the core guidance for the CCIP is to build facilities required to support cities' public service responsibility, of course, to improve our financial planning, to understand what constraints we have when it comes to projects, to establish priorities in the projects. So therefore, we have limited funds. We choose what best projects to go for, to plan for public facility construction and major equipment purchases, and of course, to support the development objects contained in the city plans. As an update for our projects, we all know about the Pecosa Middle School renovations. We've allocated $20 million in debt. The final borrowing happened March 18th. We were able to, within our constraint, because interest rates were lower, also borrowed additional $400,000 for the turf field. That also happened March 18th. Some exciting things did happen was the high school gym. We were able to put an HVA system in there. That came from three sources of funds. One was the CARES Fund for the schools, CARES Fund from the city, and then reappropriation from prior year. Additionally, some of the projects that have been in the CCIP is a self-checkout machine. We also were able to update our fleets. One of the big things was the mobile data terminals that police department has. They are now able to do things in their vehicles versus having to go into the police headquarters. Now, since the delay of the middle school, we did have some occurrence of bond interest. Of course, with the pandemic, that interest has slowly gone away because interest rates are lower, but we were able to go ahead and commit to the law enforcement record management system. That's a partnership with York County. And then we were able to replace the MDTs that the fire department had. Exciting things that we were also able to do was Phase One. We have awarded the contract. Tonight will be the final signing, so we'll proceed on that. And if you remember, Phase One takes it down Pecosa Avenue. We were also able to use the general fund, fund balance, to purchase body worn cameras for the police department, as well as advance Phase Two, which takes Pecosa Avenue's ending and take it down Cedar Avenue. So that's Phase Two. Now, some of the things that you've seen in the CCIP for the next few years happens to do with the requests from the schools' projects, as well as public safety requests. One thing you can highlight on here is the MDT replacements. Though we have purchased new ones, we can plan on the next five years having to replace more. Couple of things that the fire department's asked for is life packs and structural replacements in their current inlet. Typical things that you see in the CCIP every year is the street paving. That is state funding, so that is ongoing every year, as well as, again, the advancement of the sidewalk for the Phase Two. Couple of new things that we have in here is the engineering inspection. That's for the marine source. That's something that Parks and Rec has put forth, as well as first field improvements. So for our major league baseball players, we're bringing in the fence better so it meets high school regulations, so that way they can hit it out the park. And of course, our utility projects, those are by sewer revenue. Couple of things that they want to do is update their equipment. They want to update the buildings and then provide generators. Sorry about that. So with that being said, tonight you have the option of approving the CCIP as recommended, or if you like, we can table the item and bring back additional questions or concerns that you have.
Hi, Tanya. Thank you very much. Any questions, Tanya? We have an ordinance attached. Yeah, that's right. Exactly right. Yeah, let's open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address city manager's recommendations from 2022 through 2026. Anyone? Okay, we closed the public hearing, and now we're ready for the ordinance, I think.
I move that we adopt an ordinance approving the constrained capital improvements plan, CCIP, for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 and beyond.
Okay, thank you, buddy. Okay, we have a motion being seconded. We adopt the ordinance. Any questions, concerns, comments? Ms. Kim, please.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hessel.
Aye.
Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, Kim. Next item is an amendment for the fiscal year 2021 budget for the 2021 bond sales. Tanya?
So tonight is your second public hearing. This is to appropriate the bond money that we received in March. This is new money, both for the middle school and the turf field. You're looking at $3.6 million of additional money that's associated with that project, as well as the refinancing of $3.8 million for the sewer fund. So you do have an attached ordinance appropriating those two items.
Okay. This is our second public hearing. Is anyone in the audience who would like to address the amendment of the fiscal year 2021 budget for 2021 bond sales? Ask for a motion for the ordinance, please.
We adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget for 2021 bond sales for the purposes mentioned.
Okay, thanks, buddy. Okay. Motion being seconded, that we approve the amendment of the ordinance, excuse me. Ms. Kim, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hessel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Tanya, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. Next item on our agenda is our audience for visitors. At this time, if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address council on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. Sir, if you could just give us your name and an address for the record, please.
My name's Bob Lippincott. I live at 33 Carriage Hill Drive, and I live on Lamb's Creek. There's Lamb's Creek at low tide. What did I do with that thing? Oh, sorry. I do the next one.
So you want to do an error over? How about this? You stand right here.
I think I've used that. And there's Lamb's Creek at high tide. I'm kidding. That's not high tide, but this year, we have had the last three or four weeks with low tides that look like that, and the previous slide. So we have a crisis now in Lamb's Creek, where if you're a Democrat, it's a challenge. So I'm going to talk tonight about what we have to do to make that a viable waterway for the people that live on Lamb's Creek. Now, you have in your package some information that we're not going to go over in detail, but I will give you just a copy of how we're going to approach all that tonight.
Let's leave them right there. We'll pass them down.
Now, right now, Lamb's Creek is only usable at high tide, plus or minus an hour, an hour and a quarter. When I first moved in there in 1981, I could go in and out at all tides. Now, you certainly can't do that. And with me tonight is Mr. Jim Welteroth, who lives across the creek from me in York County, and he has sold his boat because he can't get out at all. And there have been three or four other boats disappeared from the creek. So it's not getting better, it's getting worse. It was dug around 1975 by Jimmy Moore and Mr. Caotis when they built the developments there. Their claim at the time, I understand from a friend of mine, was that they'd be back in five years and dredge the creek. That never happened, and you all know that Jimmy Moore is deceased, and nothing's been touched for 50 years in that creek. That's how long the sediment has built up. And the sediment builds up by the outfall pipes that come out of the neighborhoods into the creek on both sides. There's 10 on New York County side, and I would guess there's probably 10 on my side, on our side. And every storm we have, it builds up. And by the way, having a creek that shallow is a detriment to flooding. When we get a heavy rain or a storm, a creek that shallow, it's going to wash up in people's yards a lot sooner than it would otherwise. Now, in 1995, and this is in your package, Mr. John Kozak from York County put in a document with the DEA and York County officials to have the creek dredged, or at least bring up the subject. That never went anywhere. I'm not sure why I wasn't here then, but that's how far back the problem was identified. York County has done a lot of work compared to Pecosa on this dredging of the creek. Mr. Tom Shepard is fairly aware, he's a supervisor in York County. He's fairly aware of what has to be done, and as far as we can tell, he's in favor of it. Now, there are a couple of tough questions. I would hope that the council would direct the civil engineers, the city engineers, to get with York County and figure out the dynamics of dredging the creek. From where, how deep, what tributaries, and all that needs to be worked on by the engineers. Now, we'd like to get to three and a half feet mean low water on the creek. That would give us in and out ability again. And again, we're going to be looking at this creek more than every 50 years. I propose 20 years. York County proposes 12. It has a lot to do with money and how you pay for it. Now, there's a project that you probably know about in the city council called TMDL, Total Max Daily Load. That has to do with your runoff, stormwater, and so forth. And you have a contract with the Hampton Road Sanitation District dealing with that. And I want to read just a couple of, in that contract, a couple of items that would meet the following criteria of citizens. Address flooding and drainage problems. Maintain the stormwater infrastructure. Protect waterways. And provide the appropriate funding for the program. That is part of the stormwater management program that's in effect right now, has been signed up as a contract. So that's interesting, and it may be a way to help pay for this. The engineers, once they get their heads together and figure out what's going on, and you can see in your package what York County has done, the engineers did that. They came up with a price of $830 a year increased in taxes, and that's only for people living on the creek. I disagree with that, too, because, let's see if I can get the slide up.
Which one?
The map?
Okay, if you can. There you go. One more time?
Ah, there we go. This is the map of Lamb's Creek. The, this is the dead end of Lamb's Creek. That dark area is an area that was dredged and dug out by Jimmy Moore and the developers. All of these houses drain into that creek, and it's been going on again for 50 years. Now, you might say, the people in the creek need to pay for this. Well, first of all, the people in the creek paid more money for their houses on the waterfront than anybody else in the neighborhood. Secondly, our taxes have been in a neighborhood of $75,000 more every year, and we pay that to the city in a form of taxes. So we are paying for it, and we have been for 50 years. So it's not like we're getting something for nothing. My proposal is that you have a special taxing district for everybody that drains into the creek, and you could call it, I would say, a stormwater management fee, or call it whatever you like. But I think that makes it fair, and will lower that price of $830 down quite a bit. Okay, funding. I mentioned special task district. A grant of some kind would be great if we can get that, and would either lower the taxpayer cost, or maybe pay for the whole thing. And our friend Joe Biden put out this infrastructure bill if we can get our hands on some of that money, which is, what, $2 trillion, something like that. We don't need much of that. And get that done. Remember the old Obama program with shovel-ready projects? That fell out, just didn't work. But hopefully, we can get something going here. Now, what we're doing, basically by doing nothing, is devaluing, devaluing our properties. And the taxes go on, and sooner or later, those taxes are going to be coming down because it's not going to be waterfront property anymore. York County's already experiencing some of that. So if we do nothing at all, we're going to be left with a drainage ditch. That's all we're going to have, because you won't be able to get in and out with a boat, eventually, not even a canoe. So I would urge the city council to talk about this, see what kind of funding we can get together, and engineering work we put together to make this a viable project. Okay, are there any questions?
So we're going to do question and answer tonight. What we are going to do is what you just suggested, is we are going to talk about it as a council and get you an answer.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Let us move on to item E, approval of the minutes for our regular session, March 22nd, 2021.
I have a move that we adopt our regular session minutes of March 22nd.
Motion being seconded, that we adopt those minutes. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hessel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. One item on the new business, and the city manager gets to take the stage, is fiscal year 2022, city manager recommended annual financial planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you what I think is my 12th budget here in City Pecosa. Wife asked me how many I've presented in my career. I think this is number 17 as the administrative officer. This budget, like all of our budget processes, really begins with a review of the last year and our financial foundation. And this budget narrative, more than is normal, tells the tale not only of what we're proposing for next year, but also what we have been through over the last year. We have been through an unprecedented, at least unprecedented in our lifetime, public health emergency and associated recession out of nowhere. And so we talk about both the current year, a little bit of last year's, as well as next year. I'm pleased to report to you that, and you're aware of this because you play a key role in it, our financial position going into this unanticipated event was strong. We are, as you know, a very resilient community. We were made more so by the lessons we learned from Harris, Kane, and Isabel, further improved by the lessons we learned coming out of the Great Recession of 2008 and 2009, and those and other lessons helped to make us improve our foundation, strength of our foundation. So we approach it from a strong place. And together, we have managed our way through it in a way that has maintained that fiscal strength, so that's where we start. This may be the rare exception when not having as diversified a revenue stream as some localities actually helps us. The absence of reliance on admissions taxes and hotel taxes and things like that, in this instance anyway, helped us relative to some of our neighbors in Hampton Roads who rely more on tourism than we do in that way for the budget. So we started from a strong foundation. As we always do, we create the principles by which we develop the budget before we start the budget, and those are put together in part by review of what we've used previously, but it really incorporates all of the guidance, retreats, and other things we've had with city council, and they're kind of a living set of principles that we try to apply forward. I'll walk through those briefly, trying to summarize a 250-page document in 15 minutes. It's difficult, but I'm going to try. Guiding principle one, and the principles, they're in no particular order, but stable tax rates is something we always try to do. The upcoming budget is balanced with stable property rates. The only exception to that is we are proposing a one-set reduction to the real property rate that is in part in recognition of the estimated average increase in real property value. As people's property goes up through the assessment, natural assessment process, there is times, an occasion where you can lower the rate, and we have proposed a one-set reduction associated with this budget. As we have really every year that I've been here focused first, and almost to the exclusion of other things, on existing services rather than to expand the mission. As you know, our population is relatively stable. Our budget, while stable, does not grow leaps and bounds normally, and so we try very hard to maintain the quality of the programming we're doing now as a priority, as over expanding the mission, so to speak. As always, we adhere to the council's adopted financial guidelines as the, really, the cornerstone of everything that we do. We never stray from that. This is an important one, particularly this year, right now. We always use the best information available to us, and when we prepared the budget last year, there were a whole lot of unknowns, the length of the recession, the duration of the public health emergency, CARES Act, which came in two pieces to us, and a third piece which did not. And we found ourselves in a similar position. The American Recovery Plan, which was recently passed by Congress, signed by the president on March 11th, has significant funding for local governance in it. The rules have not been completed yet. We will not receive those funds prior to the required adoption date of this budget. So we know there's something out there that we haven't seen yet. We know that the rules are not yet written or published, but we believe that the amount of money is likely to be significant, and the duration for which it can be used, it appears to be a three and a half year process. So we'll, over the next three and a half years, we'll have a lot to do with you in making decisions on how best to deploy that in our community, but it will not be possible during this process to actively predict that. So rather than trying, we're just outlining for you quite clearly that it's not there yet. And as is often the case, almost always the case, we try to limit our new initiatives in the budget. That's kind of the flip side of the focus on existing programs. There are only three initiatives in this budget, two of which are compensation, one for city employees, one for school employees, I'll get to that in a second, and the other is a relatively small but important public safety initiative. So those are the foundations of preparing the budget. We dust them off each year, making fine-tuned adjustments based on our specific situation and/or any guidance we've received from council. And as always, the budget, particularly the new budget, is organized around the strategic focus areas that we have used for the past several years as a way to provide specific verbal focus in presentations like this, but also programmatic focus. Number one, and again, the priority numbers don't mean anything. It's just the first one on the list, is public education. What you need to know about the recommended budget for next year is it increases local school funding by almost $300,000. That is the amount requested by the school board, as proposed by the superintendent to them. It is sufficient to meet the local support requirements of the up to 5% pay increase recently approved by the General Assembly. As you'll recall, the way they did that was it's an up to, so if the community gives a 5% pay increase, the state will provide its share of that 5%. If the locality chooses a 3% pay increase, the state provides its share of the 3%. So it scales, what they do scales up with it. And so that, I'm recommending that we take advantage of that match and move forward at the full 5% level. I would remind you, and Tanya touched on this earlier, that over the last year, during the course of the public health emergency and the associated financial concerns that we've had, we've been able to stay on track and make great progress. The middle school construction project is underway in earnest, as is, as Tanya mentioned earlier, the companion project, which is the replacement of the turf field behind the school. She also mentioned that in the past year, we have been able to work with the school system and make important investments in the HVAC system at the gym at the high school. So the point is, while there are not a lot of new initiatives for FY22, we've been able to do some things in FY21, in some instances with CARES Act, and other instances with year-end funds, to continue to make investments. The budget is a living document. It's not a one-day-a-year document. And with regard to public safety, our second strategic priority area, focus area, an important project that was put together, I'm not sure who came up with the idea first, but I'll say I asked the two chiefs to work together to flesh out the details, but I'm not so sure it didn't come from one or both of them first. But the point is, to provide the money necessary for a full public the money necessary for a full public safety-rated physical examination process each year for all of our emergency responders, both fire and rescue and police, we think it's an additional investment in them as people. The jobs that they have are incredibly stressful, both psychologically and physically, and it can take a real toll on them. So if we can help them to obtain the best possible health information for themselves, we think that it'll be a very good thing for them. And that then will also be a good thing for us. So that is really the only new initiative in the budget beyond the two compensation items that I suggested. Would remind you, as Tanya did before, in the current fiscal year, we have moved forward with body-worn cameras. We have purchased the mobile data terminals for both the police cars, but also to replace the ones in the fire department's command vehicles. And about a year ago, we were able to move forward with the city's portion of the joint records management system with York County. There are no specific new quality-of-life initiative, strategic focus area three, in the FY22 budget in terms of new. But I would remind you that, and Tanya spoke about one of these previously, the sidewalk project, phase one, that contract should be executed this week. And council is aware of the progress that we are making towards the phase-two project as well. Additionally, expected to be signed this week is the shelter for South Lawson Park. That project, with your help, has been a little while coming, but it is ready to be signed this week, I'm hopeful. So we were able to continue the progress we were making with the sidewalk project, phase one of which I would remind you is funded with D dot money, and also to continue to make progress on the South Lawson Shelter, which was prioritized as sort of the number-one small project. At the time, a few years ago, I'd asked the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to give us and to give you a simple prioritization of small projects, not the larger projects, those are important too. But from time to time, year-end money or other things happen, and a small amount of money is available. And this was the one that they had identified to you, and I'm very pleased that we should sign that contract this week. Quality of service, we made many adjustments in the current year to change our service model. And some of those are outlined in the budget document that you've seen. But we've, in the past 13 months or so, we have changed how we do a lot of public service. But I think in every case, we have taken great pains to try to do as good a job or a better job in the situations that we find ourselves. I would remind you that we were among the first local governments to open back up to the public and have remained open since then. And every service that we provide, we are able to provide now, we were able, well, we weren't able to do large things like the seafood festival, and for a while there, some of our recreation programming was down because of the governor's orders. But by and large, everything we were doing before, we're doing now. We may be doing in a slightly different way. In some cases, it drove us to evolve our model, and we'll probably never go back, because I think our customers like it even more. Like, some of the things that the library's doing, for example, we'll continue to do those even when the public health emergency is over, because it really worked for our customers, people we serve. The quality-of-life initiative here, I said there were three initiatives in the budget, one being the public safety physical examination program, one being the school, support of the school system's pay plan, and this is the third. Council will recall, at mid-year of this fiscal year, so around the first of January, the council provided a 2% pay increase for city employees. This budget recommends not only providing the ongoing pay to pay for that, but also to add two or three additional percentage points, so a total of 5%, same number that's being recommended for the school system. But in our case, we were able, or you were able, to provide the first two of that five, six months early. But in both cases, they get to five. The last area is really important, and we celebrated this recently. Coming out of the 2009 recession, council worked with its financial advisors and staff to update its financial guidelines. One of those was to put forward an aspirational goal, meaning it was a goal without a specific timeline, but an aspirational goal to set aside at least $1 million in a fiscal stability reserve fund to protect us from, in our case, things like coastal storms, a major national security event, given where we live, and what we've come to find is also pandemics. It is our first line of financial defense. And with your support and your action a few months ago, we made the final deposit, I do not remember the exact number, but the final deposit to get to that million-dollar goal. And so that's something we've been able to do during the COVID-related session. Our priorities have remained fiscal stability. If you don't have that, you can't do much else. And we, B and U, have paid continuing attention to that. But it's more than just us. So as council knows this, but just to sort of put it in context, it's not just our own city government finances, but it's our communities as well. In the past year, we've been challenged to try to find ways to help. And these are some of the ways we've helped. We've delayed the interest and penalties on real estate, property taxes that were due, the first ones that were due in the pandemic as things were really changing, before they sort of settled into whatever they became over the course of the summer. We have waived late fees and interest on sewer and our waste bills. We'll continue to do that throughout the entirety of the declared public health emergency. And we have facilitated a federal grant program to help our citizens that had to link with sewer bills, and as well as other utility bills, to access federal funds to help them pay for it. Our Economic Development Office has been extremely busy in the last year, communicating with all of our businesses as state and federal grant opportunities, loan programs came up, making sure they had the information, also making sure they had the information in the seemingly ever-changing governor's public health orders. We assisted our local government, our restaurants, as they figured out ways to increase their business with outside dining. Government is not designed to move fast, but in those particular instances, we moved fast to help them. We also worked with them on a little flexibility on their signage as they were trying to advertise different ways that they were providing their services on-site. I would also point out to you that we, with your approval, helped to administer two significant grant programs that actually provided direct COVID-related relief to our businesses, one here at the Pocan program, and one as a regional program, details of which are in this budget. So we're, all of us, looking forward to the day when we put COVID-19 in the mirror. It's not there yet. But as we move through it, and as we move past it, we'll take stock of the lessons that we learned, as we did from Isabelle, as we did from the Great Recession, and countless other things in between, and implement those lessons learned, or the things that we learned from them, to make us even more resilient. We're a work in progress, and this challenge has challenged us to reexamine how we do things. I think we've done that, and I think we're positioned to continue to do well. And with that, just a couple more things, not so much for council, but for the public that may be watching. Our next significant budget date is April the 26th. That is our traditional annual public, our joint public session with the school board. Because of the COVID restrictions on how many people can be in a room, it is likely that we'll have the chairman of the school board, and the superintendent, and the opportunity of the other members of the school board to attend by phone, as each of us has over the past year, most of us, including me. That same evening will be the budget public hearing, as of the special public hearing on the tax rate because of the reassessment. And then the scheduled adoption is May 10th. You'll have a little bit more time than that if you need it, but that's at least the tentative scheduled adoption night. For copies of the budget, citizens that would like to see it, there is our web address. If you're, you can attach, or go onto this evening's meeting, you can go straight to that website. We also have hard copies in the library and city manager's office, and I bet the finance office, too, if you happen to be there. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have tonight, if you have any. If they're real detailed questions, might want to pose them to us and allow us to bring you back a written response if it's something that requires some research.
All right. Randy, thank you very much.
Well done. Any questions to the manager?
Other than to say that we are blessed to have you and the staff that we have adding up this organization, it is special. It is special. Do you have any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay.
Not on the budget.
Okay. Do you have other comments?
I do. Under comments, the city manager, I have a couple, thanks. Thank you. I'll do COVID first. This is from today's website. According to the Virginia Department of Health website today, 5,185 persons from Pecosin have received at least one vaccine. That's from many sources, but that number does not include people that received it through the US military or the Veterans Administration. So that's an added number, and we don't have that yet. So that turns out to be, this number is a little dated, so it's a little higher than it was, but as of last week, that was a little more than 45% of all our residents aged 16 and older. We're moving from the early phase of COVID vaccination, in which we had way more demand than we had vaccine and capability to administer it, mostly the first rather than the second, to, I won't say an abundance of vaccine, but we have a sufficient amount right now. And there is information on our website on how any person who is interested, 16 years and older, can get registered to get a vaccine. And there are still spaces to fill this week. So if you're interested in that, our website has the information. If you can't find it, or just would prefer to call, feel free to call the city manager's office in the morning, and we'll be glad to direct you as well. But there are three clinics that we are participating in this week, at Witthampton, at the Hampton Roads Convention Center. There are more to follow, but there are spaces still. So if you were interested, please do reach out, because they're moving very quickly into general, they were still in the 1A, 1B, 1C range, but as they get closer to a clinic, and they have not filled all the spaces, they are accepting sort of the priority two group, which is really everybody else. And so if you're 16 or older, or you know someone that is, now is the time to make sure they're registered, because we're working real hard to get all the Pecosin people that are registered with the Virginia Department of Health scheduled, primarily there at Hampton, but we can work around it if you need to get it someplace else. And we're even, thankfully, as a region, beginning to move towards serving the homebound folks as well. So if you know someone that is homebound, make sure that they're registered, and if they've got that special need, it's okay to let us know that, too, so that we can follow behind to make sure that they can get the help as soon as they can get it. And the last thing to share, people have been asking me, so I thought I would go ahead and talk about it. You may have noticed, I know council members have, the construction fencing around the old BBNT facility, the BBNT, the original bank there, is, will be under demolition in the very near future. And in its place, will rise a new CBS. In its place, and you'll see that the McDonald's Garden Center has moved, and so has the ice machine. So that was in preparation for the construction of the CBS. And I would not be surprised to see that happen in just the next few weeks as well, see the beginning of the construction for that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Any council directors? Mr. Green?
Just like to add my personal commendation to Randy and the staff for a wonderful job on the budget. It's been a really difficult year, and I think they've done a super job.
Have a deep, buddy. Thank you. David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have no comments tonight.
Okay. Mr. Southall?
I would like to add my thank you also to Randy and the staff for the annual financial plan and the capital improvements plan. They do an excellent job every year. It blows my mind how well they do it. I was glad to see the one-cent tax rate reduction as property values went up, and that will help with that. And I'd like to thank all the citizens at home who are paying.
Council meeting tonight. Thank you, bud. Chair?
Same thing with the budget. A lot of work goes into that, not just a lot in your office, but then all the city employees that have to provide to you and do that budget. So it's, you know, it's something that spreads to almost all city employees. You know, that's a lot of work, and that's what I do for a living, so I appreciate how much work that is. And I just wanted to thank you, Randy, because it struck me this week, you know, I call you often for things that come up, say, you know, this is what I'm seeing, and, you know, am I understanding this right? And I just want to say you do a great job of presenting, always presenting both sides of anything that we're presented with, you know. You know, I will give my, you always will say, well, you know, you can look at it this way, and then you can look at it this way. And I just wanted to say how helpful that is to me, you know, you're both sides of an issue, and to hear things that maybe I didn't consider as a councilperson, which I appreciate that as a city manager.
Well said. Well earned, by the way. Mr. Canelo? I think I say it, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, welcome back. Good to see you.
Well, thank you. Most of what I was gonna say has already been said, but just to pick up on a couple of words that you used earlier, we are absolutely blessed to have our manager, staff, and community volunteers that we have in this community. So just wanted to say that.
All right. Anything else? Anything further from anybody? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made second with adjourn. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am, and we will adjourn.